Let's move on to the next item, which is the ... I lost my place.
The website.
It's the City website. We have to move it.
Hi, Megan Glass, Public Information Officer. So, we're currently in agreement with Civic Plus to manage our website. Through that agreement, as of January 24th, 2016, we're up for a refresh, which is a really exciting time because we get to take a deep dive into our content and go page by page and really update it and make it work for the public to get the information that they want and they need. So through this process, over the next month, I'll be working with department heads and staff to go through page by page, through section by section, to see what pages we can delete, how we can edit them, and how we can really make them effective from the public standpoint. As part of this process, I've really taken a deep dive into the analytics of our current website. So that means I've taken a look to see what pages are effective now, if they're working, how many visits we're getting to each of the pages, which ones are our top pages that are getting the most visitors. We can make sure that information is forward and forward-facing on the homepage of our website, so it is effective. So that's going to be a key role over the next month, is taking a look at those analytics, working with department heads, and really updating the information for the public. Now, once we do that and get through that whole process, we'll bring it back, I'm sure, and take a look at kind of summary of it. But then we'll turn it over to Civic Plus, so they can update the design of it. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of leeway with the look and feel and can't be as creative as I'm sure that we would like to be. They do have a template for us, so once you have a chance to get back to your computers, take a look at the City of Fort Myers website, it'll be very similar to the look and feel of that. Now, with that said, we are going to take an approach of adding more pictures and maybe getting some video and doing some things to really enhance it. So we'll keep you updated as we go, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
You're doing a great job so far. I know you're great in all of your statistics, and so that's kind of, I think, blended into what you're doing, so go forward. And let's, as everybody's been saying, the website needs improving, and I think that you probably saw that when you first came here, so go forward.
Thank you.
Megan, a quick question. How are you planning on involving the public in this to say, you know, are you going to have draft things up there going, "Hey, vote, do you like this or do you not like this"? Are people going to be able to interactively give you feedback on the website while you are progressing through this revision or enhancement?
I'm going to defer to events on that.
Well, I think there's, there are certain limitations with the agreement that we have with our contract order on this. So we can have some limited input, but pretty much the template is what they're driving with us. We're just going to look primarily to look, make it a little more effective. And again, with Megan using the analytics to see where the hits are coming and how we may do that a little bit more, but it really will not be a fundamental A to C rewrite of the website.
The good thing is we're doing it.
One thing, just to add to Ms. Toll's comment, is that you can look at this kind of as phase two of our three-phase process with Civic Plus. This is mid-contract to get the refresh. Now, by the end of the contract, we can start to look at, you know, take public comment and see where do we want to go from here when this contract is ending at phase three? Do we want to start with another company? Do we want to take a more design approach to this? Do we need more leeway here or there? So that's phase two.
Megan?
Megan.
I just had, from a budgetary standpoint, I just wanted to make sure that you're planning ahead for the budget season, looking in terms of the major refresh, tying in the innovation district, some of the other things for the city's entire marketing plan. Just let us know as soon as possible, you know, what to consider, so we can take a look at that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the consideration to approve resolution for the Freedom and Waterfront Special Events and Fireworks. Mr. Pastu?
We're requesting City Council approval of a resolution approving the 2016 Freedom on the Waterfront Special Events, along with the fireworks that would be scheduled for July 3rd. That program is in conjunction with the Maaldora Chamber of Commerce.
For discussion or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Pastu, second. Okay, discussion? Mr. Roulette, please.
We have to read the resolution, I believe.
Sorry.
I don't know. That was me.
Right, you got it.
The title, I know.
Okay, Resolution 2016-07, read by title only, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maaldora, Florida approving the Freedom on the Waterfront Special Event application, including the launching of fireworks.
Okay, any discussion? Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, back to council. The others, let's have vote, please.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Tillet?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Consideration to approve renewal of Village Market Agreement. Mr. Pastu?
We're requesting City Council approval of a renewal of the Village Market Agreement with Visit Maaldora, the Chelms Beach Sunday. It has noted in there that we receive $25 per hour for operation, with some limited involvement on our part as far as providing water, some electricity, and also disposal of some waste.
Page 17 of the agenda, at the top of the page, sort of a broad statement, and I'll start from the beginning. "User may request to adjust the setup, operating, and/or cleanup hours and to conduct activities on other days than Sundays, for example, or special events, or during peak holiday times." This sort of locks up the park and keeps others from planning events at the park, so I think we need to address that.
Well, I think the, if you may, the next sentence said, "The city shall have the sole discretion in the city's decision whether or not to grant such request." So it would, you know, I think if it's significant deviation, it certainly would come back to City Council if it was associated with an event.
Well, this sort of gives them part-blank. Then someone has to come to the city to bring it to their attention.
Well, I think it starts off with, I mean, right at the top, it says, "User may request." It doesn't grant them authority, and as I said, that we have the sole discretion to approve whether or not to do that later in that paragraph. I think what you're getting at is we got the flexibility that we need to determine whether if there's a request to change, that it certainly at the city's discretion, whether to grant that or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. I certainly support doing this. It's good business for the city of Maaldora. It's a nice, we buy our bread there on Sundays, on the Sunday market. But my only question of events, and I think he answered it when I asked him, is, is the $25 per hour for five hours sufficient to cover the cost, at least make it neutral? And my suspicion or my reading through the discussion is that it does, and if it does, I'm fine with that. If we're losing money on it, I think we need to adjust the dollar amount, and that's my only comment, but I certainly support the renewal.
Okay. May I comment on that? When, I know when the initial contract was done, there was talk about monitoring the water, monitoring the electricity, to see how we come out with these things, but there was no feeling of the council at time to do that kind of monitoring. Now, we're, Mr. Surty, you operate the thing for, you have, actually, it's an eight-hour deal, you know, from setup and tear down. Eight-hour deal, but the contract's only for five hours. I really don't understand that. Since you're going to have electric, everything's going to be there, and city services, why not the eight hours instead of the five hours?
Don Stewart, President of Maaldora and also Market Manager. The five hours is all that we need, and that's what we operate under. We have about an hour before and after for setup and closing. As far as the electricity, there's only six plugs in the entire park, and we probably maybe use four of them out of the six, so the electricity used is minimal. We have one little water hose which we hook up, and that's just to provide some water to meet the requirements of the city and of the park department, to have cleanup buckets there for the one or two things we have with food. We pay the city about $6,000 a year for the use of the park for a few hours on Sunday. And to address the other issue, one of the biggest trends that's going in the country now is evening markets. The land has a wonderful, successful evening market, and the only thing we want is to be able to go to the city and say, "Can we have permission one time for next week or the week after, or the month after, to change the market hours from five to nine to hold an evening market to keep Maaldora in the loop?"
Yeah, just don't get me wrong, this, I love that event down there, it's a great event, everything, but if you're using it for eight hours, you know, if you're, if it's there for setup, cleanup, and use for eight hours, why aren't you being billed for eight hours that it's being used, you know, for the use of the park and so?
Well, our actual use is only the five hours that we're there from nine until two, and that's what we lease it from, so I don't know how the city wants to interpret the other. I think the amounts are minimal, I really do. Like I say, I think we pay quite a bit for the city to have the park for the minimal hours that we do use it when it's not normally in use by any other individual, and we're totally at the mercy of the city. So whatever they say we can and can't do, is what we can and can't do.
It's just a, just a thought on my part on that. The other issue, I, the other issue I definitely have a problem with is the, there's a part near about, it's a two-year contract, which again, I have no problem with a two-year contract, but automatic renewals. And basically, that sounds to me, Mr. Shepherd, pregnant for long, that sounds like a kind of a contract we're entering into perpetuity with Mr. Stewart, and I know we got into problems with Sullivan Ranch entering those kind of agreements before in the past, so that Sullivan Ranch, excuse me, Sullivan Shores. And, but why would we need an automatic renewal? They should be after the end of the, at the end of the contract period, come in and apply for another permit at that point.
Well, at the end of the contract, we do renew, but I would also point out that the city can cancel this contract at any time within 15 days' notice. So you don't have a perpetual contract.
Well, anyway, I know, we're not going to, you know, probably terminate something like that.
I hope so.
But the thing is, is we should not have a, I think, an automatic renewal. I think that should be, that part should be stripped and used, just regular phrase, just that it comes in for a permit after the end of the contract time, and I think that's, that's fair to the, you know, to the citizens and everybody else to have that phrase in there.
I operate at the pleasure of the city.
I would love to see an evening market in the summer sometime, when it's a little cooler and we all come out of our burrows to forage for food once the sun goes down. So anyway, if you seriously are planning on doing that, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep up, and I want to do that. I'm even going to be talking and try to bring a couple of food trucks, or bring a couple of vans in, so that it will be somewhat of a party for the city. And it's not going to be every day, or every week, or every month, and we have to go to the city and seek permission to do it, and when we do, we're seeking permission to do it on a one-time basis, then we have to go back and seek permission to do it again if we want to do it again and it's successful.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
If you're, I mean, I think it's a great idea to do it in the evenings, but in the summer in Florida by the lake, the mosquitoes would just carry everyone away.
Well, that's one of the things we're going to consider before we do it.
We do have great mosquitoes here. I move approval of the renewal of the contract under the terms as are submitted, and if I get a second on explaining this?
I'll second.
The explanation that we have 15 days to terminate, as well as does the other party, have 15 days to terminate mutually, should solve any issues with regard to renewal. And I think if we trust our city manager and his staff to say, "Oops, we got a problem," that's an instant bringing back to us that there's an issue even in midterm, and we can consider it, and if the changes that we're seeking are not accepted, we'll exercise our 15-day notice, and he's gone. So I don't have any problem with doing it as it is.
I'd like to, I've got a second on that. I'd like to get just another comment on the, and I agree with you, we have 15-day termination, they have a 15-day termination, but it's still, it's still a totally separate issue from a renewal, an automatic renewal, still a totally separate issue from an automatic renewal that we're granting, automatic renewals on a contract like that, just as, so we would not, I don't think we'd enter into a, an agreement, automatic renewal with, let's say, our waste company, our waste management company. We have, I think, whatever contract we had, and we have a renewal, the rightful renewal, but not a automatic renewal. And Mr. Shepherd, if you care to comment on the difference between the two, if I'm wrong, okay, fine, no problem.
This is really a preference issue, and I'll give you a perfect example. We don't often think of the agreements, for example, we have with our cable TV providers or satellite providers, except in the first couple of years when you're paying them back for the equipment as automatic renewals, but they are, but they're also terminable at will by simply picking up phone and saying, "Hey, come get your equipment, I'm not paying anymore." So this is like that, and so it really depends on how you gauge this contract. We all enter in these kinds of agreements in our everyday lives all the time, and then there are some contracts that we feel are more special, and for example, leases, you know, leases for your home, leases for an apartment, your office space and so forth, and those you're going to look at. You're not just going to typically automatically renew them without going and then renegotiate, reviewing the terms and so forth. So it really depends on, at the end of the day, how you view this agreement and which category you think it falls into. The protection of termination on 15 days' notice is sufficient protection, but if you feel like, hey, we won't even remember this thing is in place unless somebody makes us review it every two years or whatever, then, you know, that would be the other consideration.
What kind of agreement have we been operating under, have you been operating under before?
Basically, the same agreement. We just had it when it was originally done. There was the thought that it would be automatic renewable, but it wasn't done at the time, so when this agreement was made out, this is the way it came. I operate totally under the auspices of Parks and Rec, and I deal with the agreements they produce for me and decide to accept or not, and that's all I'm doing. I'm operating at the pleasure of the city. It's convenient, it's easy, it gives me an opportunity to pre-plan knowing that barring some extenuating circumstance, I'm going to be there, I'm going to have the opportunity to be there. So it gives me a little bit of security and it gives me a little bit of pre-planning ability to know that unless the city steps in.
If I could, I don't know, I think it's called a secondary motion, but I'd like to make a secondary motion to postpone action on this until the second meeting in April.
You know, when the council talks up here, please don't interject all the whatever that goes on in the audience, please. And we're trying to keep it orderly, and please have respect for the council people who do make questions. If you don't, if you don't care to do that, then there is an accident in this room.
So my motion is to postpone action on this item until the second meeting, regularly scheduled meeting in April.
Is it in April?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion to bring it to the table for discussions because I need to understand why.
And as it should be, I make the motion, and now I have the floor to just really simply say.
There's, no, 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 we have a motion for postponement, I just, and I know we're not supposed to discuss it, but I need to, and I'm sorry on this, Shepherd on that, but why April instead of maybe March?
Sure.
Please, if you would.
Well, the reason is that this is a great, great thing. I have no problem with it on the surface. We are undertaking now a parking study that's to last about eight weeks and then have time to review it. So everyone says, "Don't be hasty, don't make these decisions and lock us in and tie us in." So we've got a study about parking, and it would seem reasonable that we'd want to at least see what the parking study has said, if it reinforces that this is a great place to have it, if there's a different site than it should be, and it just seems that to have that. And if I'm correct, there's no action required at this time, that they can continue to operate freely and go on, so that's why I made the motion, with just the idea that we make the decision with all the information available.
As a point of order, I think the motion is out of order technically. There's a motion on the table, and...
I got a, I got a feeling that you probably corrected me if he's right, and I think there, we had a motion and a second, and are we allowed to do a postponed motion?
Do a substitute motion. I'm sorry.
First of all, this is one of the reasons why we try to not strictly follow the procedure because of how difficult it is.
That's why I allow, that's why I allow a different comment there.
If, if there is a desire amongst the body to postpone the motion, the best way to see that in action would be to vote on the motion and defeat it, and then decide, "What are your next action?" That is an option, it's not the only option. If you choose to take up, I think he said it's a, Mr. Slavy said it's a secondary motion. I don't have my Robert rules tonight, but that's probably accurate, but I don't know that it requires, in fact, I don't think it gets discussion, notwithstanding your question, and I think it's an up or down. The, and I don't, the one thing that's missing from a stern point of just analyzing it is, I don't know whether the contract is expired and they can continue as Mr. Slavy assumes, or they can't continue, I don't know.
Well, the contract has expired, and they've been functioning without one, so part of the reason for bringing it in.
Yes, that's the reason that I wanted on that the, I know there's other, there's other issues.
Oh, if, I mean, I don't want to be difficult, I'll withdraw the motion, that's no problem.
So we're just going to go on the original motion is just to approve it, and since we're going to, we have that, public is allowed to comment?
I'm, I'm, this doesn't seem, oh, I guess it's on now, okay. I'm Cecil Thomas, 8197 Bridgeport Bay Circle. With regard to the concern that the mayor expressed regarding an automatic renewal, and I understand Mr. Shepherd's response about there are the contracts you really worry about, and those that are smaller, that you don't have as much concern about. One way that I have seen in the past in other contracts that have perhaps resolved those concerns, and Mr. Rothson might consider, if he wishes to amend his motion, would to be to allow the automatic extension, but for a limited number of extensions, i.e., the contact, contract can automatically be extended for two more equivalent terms or something like that, so that at least it doesn't get forgotten, and after six years or eight years or 10 years, it does really need to come back for a formal review. Thank you.
Can I make a?
I don't have a problem even agreeing with the mayor's position that we limit it to a two-year period, and then he, and Don has to come back and talk to us again. I don't have a problem with that, I don't think he does, but I think we're really debating angels on the head of a pin here because it's such a small issue, but it's important to other people, and if it moves it along, I don't think I can amend my own motion, but if somebody wants to amend my motion to have a two-year contract under the terms printed here and to remove the unlimited portion, I can certainly vote for that. I just want to move this along and get, and get a contract going.
I agree. And since we do work informally on those things, if you want to amend your motion to that, then we can, we'll accept that.
I'd rather not, but I would, I meant, I meant the motion that I made, but if everybody is convinced we, we can't trust a 15-day advance notice removal, which is the only thing I'm hearing, then I'll move to a, I'll move my own motion to substitute a removal of, to approve it with the removal of the, whatever provision that is, wherever that is.
It's a government, I know.
Page one, automatic removal portion.
Give me a second.
I do.
Okay.
I will second you again.
Okay, I'm going to public comment back here, more discussion on this, and...
It's a substitute motion, so it's the only one on the table.
Right. So seeing that, no discussion, we have a vote, please.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Ms. Tillet?
Yes.
And Jerome?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Consideration to approve the special events street closure for the 2016 Monty Boyd 5K Run.
We're requesting City Council approval of the Third Annual Monty Boyd 5K Run, scheduled for April 23rd, beginning at the Maaldora Christian Academy at 6:00 a.m. and concluding by 11:00. That's all-inclusive of the setup and breakdown for the event.
Any discussion on council?
Move approval.
Any further discussion? Public wish to comment? Seeing none, back to council, and we have a, a vote, please, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Tillet?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Consideration to adopt resolution amending fiscal year 2015-16 dispatch budget, ratify acceptance.
I've got the blueberry.
I put a mark there next to that. Consideration to approve the special events street closure for 2016 Maaldora Blueberry Festival.
We're requesting council approval of the special event for the 2016 Blueberry Festival that would be scheduled April 23rd and 24th at Evans Park, and closing of Edgerton Court as part of that. I believe it was initially at Sunset Park and then along Alexander as well last year, and now it's moving to, proposed to be moved down to Evans Park.
Yes, I have a question. First, first question, that it says, "Less impact to downtown businesses," sorry, "Less impact to downtown businesses due to less road closures." I thought that last year that, well, I guess my question is, were businesses asked if there was impact to their, to their sales or whether they liked it there at Sunset Park? I thought, I thought that having events at Sunset Park and the public place and along that pedestrian mall actually helped bring more buyers into the stores in the downtown area. That was one question, and the second one was, can you please explain what this ability to expand to a two-event with minimal personnel expenses means?
Well, I think the first part of it is, in talking with Mr. Hughes and Carson, that I think last year there was some concern of vendor locations competing with businesses there on Alexander. So their sense of it is to be a little bit further removed from direct competition with some of the businesses. And then the other thing is to have a two-day event, and one of the things, it is important if it's concentrated in an area such as...
Two-day event.
Two-days.
Two events.
Yeah.
This says two events. Okay, I didn't have two yet.
Yes, but essentially, you go from a single-day event as it was in 2015 to a two-day in 2016.
This was, this event, I think, was one of our very successful first events that we had last year. It was extremely successful. I know it exceeded, far exceeded the sponsors' expectations for it. They ran out of blueberry pies very early. I understand he's got the large contract to have a bunch more made this year, so anyway.
Say Matt.
Is there, we have a motion for approval on this.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any comments from the public on this? Seeing none, council, have any further questions?
You mentioned about business impact, and I had a few people talk to me about the use of Sunset Park area and the pedestrian mall, and I'm trying to understand better how much businesses are impacted negatively and how many actually really enjoy having activities there. I'm not necessarily saying that we should necessarily talk about it in regard to the Blueberry Festival, but I think there is, there is not a totality of opinion that it's all bad. In fact, a lot of people like that. For me personally, and this is anecdotally, so I admit that it might not be correct, but a lot of times when there's things down at Elizabeth Evans Park, people park, when they act there, get back in their car and leave, versus if something's happening at Sunset Park on the pedestrian mall, the parking then, they do their business there for whatever the festival, and then they wander about the community and drop some money at other businesses. So I just want to, I just want us to spend more time studying that in the future so that we're making the best use of that beautiful asset.
That's Mrs. Rich's, are you leaving?
You bet.
Okay. You have eyes right now. You have knives right now. So, no, no, the, I've noticed that when I was talking about Sunset Park, and a lot of things being used there, businesses in our town have been very resilient, and, and they've been very adaptive through the different locations, and the different festivals that we have, and the food trucks, I think, being one of our prime examples, and that the merchants in town, the other restaurants, and refreshment areas that we have in town have adjusted to the food trucks, and I don't see any problem with this one either, so, Mr. Rolfson?
I, I understand Mr. Slavy's suggestion, I hope that is reviewed from time to time by management, I'm going to trust management to do that, and, because that's a management issue to bring to us if I'm an issue, so, but I, I'm sure they will.
Ms. Johnson, can I have a vote, please?
Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Okay, now, consideration to adopt the resolution amending the dispatch budget and ratified acceptance of the grant through Lake County for purchase of power source.
Resolution number 2016-06, right by title only, a resolution of the City of Mount Dora, Florida, pertaining to amending the budget for the fiscal year 2015 to 16, providing for the annual appropriations, providing for an effective date.
This item is, the Police Department received a grant from Lake County, it's a 50-50 grant, of which we would contribute $11,000 toward the $22,000 purchase, and we're recommending that source come from contingency in the general fund, so it's an anticipated expenditure and opportunity that presented itself, and so we think we should take advantage of it.
Very good. Kevin Boo, second. Anybody have any further questions to address? Seeing none, back to council, any more comments? Have a vote, please.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is, on the agenda is a consideration to approve a separation agreement for the city manager.
Mayor and city council, and I started this a couple of weeks ago, was simply in the context of looking at, as I said, what I thought was the desire of the council, and so here I am alone with it, and certainly for your consideration tonight. You know, we brought back what was discussed last week, Jan. 26th, which was the direction of the council. What we have here is a separation agreement that would take effect March 4th, basically all of the provisions contained in my employment agreement, if so approved, I did have one miscellaneous item associated with it, which is reimbursement of, for expenses I never turned in for my interview. Mrs. Pastu periodically would remind me, and I said, "Well, I got the job," and nor am I asking for when I made a subsequent trip to kind of assess whether I'd be a good fit with the organization afterwards. So that's the only little miscellaneous item I have in there, it's that, you know, pull it out, I'm not going to whine or complain about it. That's the content of it presented tonight.
Okay, discussion?
I oppose this council accepting Mr. Pastu's proffered resignation, if that's what it is, and I would urge him to withdraw it.
I second the motion.
I don't think there was a motion. There was not a motion?
Yes, there was.
I'll make it.
What is the motion again, please?
Mr. Past, that this council urged Mr. Pastu to withdraw his resignation, to continue for at least several months with the important things looming for the City of Mount Dora, not the least of which is the innovation issue with OCAVA, SWAT, all those other things we talked about, and it places this city in a dangerous, tenuous, risky position, and I pray for to my motion, that I move that this council urged Mr. Pastu to withdraw his resignation, if that's what he's doing.
And there was a second there?
Yes, my second that.
Is there public discussion?
Oh, wow. You're amazing.
Please hold your remarks, please.
Thank you.
Well, there's somebody there already, if you want to.
Hold the flag.
Okay, you go first, Joe.
Carol Jaskowski, 541 East First Avenue. Last week's meeting, some citizen comments included what I believe to be gross mischaracterizations of Mr. Pastu's presentation of a potential resignation letter. In addition, some council members have implied agreement with those comments. In my opinion, the presumption that this was some disrespectful ultimatum and a signal of his desire to leave Mount Dora couldn't be more wrong. He has repeatedly voiced his strong preference to say, to stay. I see his action as a demonstration of his desire to ensure much-needed continuity of talented, proven Mount Dora management at a most critical time. Nonetheless, it was something of a risky move on his part, and what was put most at risk was his livelihood. Personally, I find it refreshingly admirable when someone places his personal and professional integrity above a paycheck, and would urge, urge council and my fellow citizens to see it that way, too. Losing this level of talent would be enormously costly to us. To believe the search firm's so-called money-back guarantee would make change a freebie is pure folly. It won't come close to the cost of getting little or no productivity during a new hire's learning curve. Mr. Pastu has provided us a rare and fortunate example of the term hit-the-ground running in every aspect, from developing his SWAT analysis to fostering high employee morale. You should do everything you can to keep him and his staff choices running on our behalf, to do otherwise, risk bringing Mount Dora's management to a crawl, throwing it into a reverse, or potentially triggering an epidemic of key staff defections. In that regard, I would certainly urge you to pass Mr. Rolfson's motion, and I'll close by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak, and please do all you can to retain the very exceptional services of Vince Pastu, Mark Regenton, and Cliff Shepherd.
I'm Henry Bates, on 426 East 10th Avenue. I did not prepare a speech, so I won't say that much. I see the council struggling as it is with the decision-making, and now you're going to fire three guys, what are you going to do? You know, where do you get your assistance, where do you get the knowledge? How, how many of you people have knowledge of city management? Look the people, and our citizens in the eye, you know, and retain the staff to continue the city council properly. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ed Delatre, I'm an 18-year resident of Mount Dora with my wife, and we looked at a lot of places before we made the decision to come here. We love this town, we want to continue to live here, and I'd all like the action of what's going on to get rid of a terrific man with great background, and men who have worked to make this city what it is today. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I'm honored to be here tonight. My name is Rob English, I'm the president of the Mount Dora Chamber of Commerce, and we're in the business of commerce. I really only want to make one thing clear, because I've heard it from Vince, it was in a private meeting, there's people in this room to know what he said, and I can assuredly tell you that this gentleman does not want to leave the City of Mount Dora. Trust me on that, there's been rumors out there, he does not want to leave. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Ryan Donovan, 1487 East First Avenue. I'm going to present to you tonight a petition to retain current city manager, the deputy city manager, and city attorney. The petition summary, our best opportunity for success is having the best qualified, knowledgeable, and professional employees working together. We demand the City of Mount Dora mayor and the city council take whatever steps necessary to do what is in the best interest of our citizens. The action petition for, we, the undersigned, urge our leaders to act now to retain the city manager Vincent Pastu, deputy city manager Mark Regenton, and city attorney Cliff Shepherd. The only difference with this, other than past petitions, is I will actually hand it in, it'll be on record.
Thank you.
Margie Prannis, 631 High Point Drive. Last week I spoke, and I'm going to say the same thing again, I asked a question last week, perhaps you can answer it today. What have these three men done wrong that you need to get rid of them? They're exceptional men, we're lucky to have them. What mayor did they do wrong? That's my question. Could you answer me, please? Because the only reason he wants to leave is because he can't get along with you and some of your buddies on council. What has, what has he done wrong? Why do you want to be a dictator? And put your own three men in positions that are beautifully filled, fabulous, qualified executives. Why do you want to change it? I'd like my question answered, please.
Okay, for one, Mr. Regenton has not been asked to leave, Mr. and Mr.
But you've made it uncomfortable for him.
I, Mr. Shepherd has not been, and has not been terminated either, okay?
You have made it exceptionally uncomfortable for them, which is why they're not pleased relating to you.
Appreciate your comments, and move on to somebody else who would like to make a comment, please.
My name's Patrick O'Farrell, over at 1231 East 8th Avenue, Mount Dora. Just have three things to say. If Mr. Pastu is so eager to stay in Mount Dora, all he has to do is withdraw his resignation. Number two, if the council is willing to accept his resignation, I will give you a Shakespearean, I forget which play it comes from, but if the foul deed needs to be done, it's best done quickly, and this has festered long enough, so you would make that decision. And then we'd point out another obvious thing that some people may not have considered in Mr. Pastu, and Mr. Regenton, and others, the sanitaries of this country are full of indispensable people.
We haven't had council discussions. Okay, very good. I, too, can confirm what Mr. English said, is that Mr. Pastu does not wish to resign. I urge him to withdraw it, or for this council to pass my motion. Secondly, at the council meeting at the community center last week, and even weeks before, I remember hearing from the vast majority, maybe with one exception or two, that nobody wants Mr. Pastu to resign. The mayor, the mayor had specifically said that, you said it tonight, nobody's asking anybody to resign. So this is a vote of confidence in our city manager, if nothing else, but I would either have him remove his, and it wasn't a resignation, it was an intent to resign, he hasn't given any resignation letter, I hereby resign. But regardless, I think the motion should pass, and we should move on.
Any other council comments? Mr. Crayle?
Mr. Pastu, do you want to resign or, or not? The answer is, I would like to stay, but I will tell you, let's go back to where we started. If I interpreted that with some of the comments, with big changes coming, and again, the nexus of being prior to the election, and either comments with employees hearing that big changes were coming, okay, if that meant Mr. Regenton and Mr. Shepherd, and certainly his position is under review, I would offer up to you, Mr. Regenton, of which I think he would accept the agreement that you initially had before you tonight, but as I said, as a manager, I'm crippled. I've essentially capitulated to political pressure, what's, by handling Mr. Regenton's transition from the organization, and that was the starting point. Do I want to leave? No. But when I presented it to you on the 19th, under those circumstances, yes, I would have accepted leaving, under those circumstances.
What are your thoughts right, right now? Do you, do you want to remove your separation agreement as city manager?
Well, I think at this point, given, you know, what I had talked about on the 19th, and even on the 26th, and, and the agreement the council had, that they bring this back forth, I'm not going to, I'll interpret it as such. I mean, I'm not going to mince words on it, there was some pretty strong language in, in challenging the council to, to go forward, we got a lot of work to do, but I do think it's important. I mean, if, if the council has no desire whatsoever to defund Mr. Regenton's position, or anything of that nature, then, okay, that's a great start for me to, to, to want to stay. He's an important employee in our organization, but I also think it's important to send a message to other employees, which started this whole thing, is they're starting to worry about where their job future is, and so that's the stabilization. If it was, as I guess, I said, if it was Mr. Regenton and myself, okay, I can, I can present that to you and accept it, but if the council is not, you know, willing to go on record of not defunding his position, assuring the employees that there's going to be stability as we go forward, then, yeah, I'm okay, but that's, that's where I'm at with it as well.
Yeah, I, I don't see how defunding has anything to do with any department head or any other, or any other employee. The city manager and the city attorney report, or in, are in the chain of command of council, all other employees are in the chain of command of the city manager.
I move the previous question. I move the previous question.
I'll second that.
Have a vote on the question. Just call it, go ahead. All right, okay, we're going to take a vote on the, on the question at hand, which is?
The motion was to encourage Mr. Pastu to withdraw his resignation. I don't have it right in front of me here. Mr. Rolfson opposes and makes a motion that, that city council not accept Mr. Pastu's proffered, I think is the word you used. Resignation, and he urged Mr. Pastu to withdraw his resignation and continue for several months with the important things happening in the city, and he named some, as it places the city in a dangerous position to allow Mr. Pastu to resign.
Last comments were just aside.
Okay.
Okay, because I just, when I just read there, heard that we got two motions within one, one to.
Just one motion.
I believe it was restated. That's all clarified, that's my understanding, because initially, there was a second when there wasn't a motion technically, and I'm going to make them.
We have a motion, we have a motion to, to refuse his resignation, is what we're saying? That's?
I think the motion, and I may have gotten it wrong, but what I heard was a motion that we encourage Mr. Pastu to withdraw his resignation and to stay with the city, and that was the motion that I heard seconded, there was a lot of discussion, but I think the essence of the motion is what I just said.
Yes, okay.
Ready for the vote?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
No.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Roulette?
No.
Ms. Tillot?
No.
Mr. Jerome?
No.
Please hold the comments. Please hold the comments.
Point of information, from a council standpoint, from the public standpoint, where do we go from here?
We're, we're still considering the consideration to approve a separation agreement for the city manager.
Okay.
I move approval of item seven, approval of the separation agreement for the city manager. Is there a second? Mr. Rolet, second. Any comments from the public? Please, 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 keep it orderly. Please limit the comments if you can, if there's going to be a lot of comments, please limit the comments on new items, and try not to keep repeating the same thing over and over again. I appreciate that. If we can't, so we can move things a little bit forward.
Thank you, Nick. I haven't spoken yet, so you're assuming until.
No, no, I'm not assuming.
Judy Phillips, Jen, thirty-eight, twenty-six, Tactus Lane, Mount Dora, Florida. And yes, I'm the one who's a native of Mount Dora, Florida. I grew up here. I'd like to ask y'all.
We have some quiet out there, please.
Before you, I'd like to ask y'all, before you vote on this motion, to take a breath, step back. Come on, folks. Three of you have only been on this council since November. You have been running headlong into more trouble than you can shake a stick at, mainly because you don't understand your job yet, you don't understand the charter, and you don't understand the complexities of a town that is someplace special, like Mount Dora. Quit running headlong into dismantling our town. Take a breath, step back, try and compromise. The rest of us would really appreciate it.
Jim Marie, twelve twenty-four Normandy Drive. I can't say it any better. There's nothing more I can say. So, all.
Mayor and city council members, I may, this may be career suicide for me, and if it is, so be it. I'm a big girl and I can handle that. I've worked with several city managers, several city attorneys in my career, and I've not worked for any better than what we have here. My husband's a professional, respected throughout this county and Orange County. I can tell you, I believe in my heart that a huge mistake's being made here. I can only hope and pray that the city's going to recover, and I'm scared to death right now. But I've given the last ten years of my life to this city. I love the city, I love everything it stands for. We have great people in this town, we have a beautiful asset here in our city itself. And, you know, the object here that we all want is to make it better, not to hurt it. We're going to hurt the city. Well, not we, not me, but the city is going to be hurt deeply as a result of these decisions. And I hope that when we lay our heads on our pillows at night, we can fall asleep and feel comfortable with the decisions we've made.
Thank you.
Rose Anna Bato, five forty-one East First Avenue. My husband and I have a three-year-old grandson, and his favorite cartoon show on television is Thomas the Train. And I liken this city council to Thomas the Train, because there's one train wreck after another. This train, this car's off the track, that car's off the track. If you all vote tonight to let Vince Pastu leave, and you do anything that is detrimental to the continued employment of Mark Regentin and Cliff Shepherd, all I can say is that you have a legacy as this city council of screwing up a city faster than any other city council probably in the history of this country. This is absolutely incredible. You've got three strong managers, you've got a strong lawyer, you've got a strong, two strong managers. Took us a long time to find Vince Pastu. Not one of you can ever come up with anything publicly, that you're willing to say publicly, about why you would release any of them. My impression of Vince, since he's been here, is that he's not prone to hysterics. So a whole bunch of stuff had to go on behind the scenes before he ever brought up the fact that he did not, would not stay unless things got cleaned up a little bit. So let's stop having a train wreck. Let's stop being a cartoon show. Let's be a responsible city council and keep this city running the way it's been running before you got here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terry Hanraut. I live at six five eight Clark Court. I've only been here a year. I've seen a whole lot of signs go up in shops where the shops aren't there anymore. I've talked to some shop owners that said, I don't know what I'm going to do, they keep raising my rent, they're pushing me out. I don't see that as something that's progressive for this town. I hear about Lake Mary and how wonderful Lake Mary is, and the place I used to go to, which was, what's the other one? No help there. The one on the other side of the coast, in Norton, anyway. It doesn't, it doesn't compare to the quaintness of this little New England town. And I don't know why in the world we want to give it up. I mean, to me, it's ridiculous. We don't need to be at Lake Mary or the other one, I can't remember the name of, but it's ridiculous. And to think that we've got a city council now that could move us forward.
It's off.
I don't understand why it's such a problem. Though I'm for this council, and I'm relying on this council to keep us forward.
I think none, any?
Oh, there's none.
Susie Waddell, eight thirty-one North Grandview. We will survive.
Um, a lot of challenges here. But unfortunately, Mr. Pastu, you've brought this to a challenge, you've brought this to a head with your announcement at the meeting last week, two weeks ago. As I said earlier, you're an excellent politician, and the city needs an excellent manager, and we don't need another politician. Unfortunately, you've allowed yourself to become embedded with, in my opinion, a segment of the politicians that are unbending after losing an election. Mr. Creel has raised an excellent point. A dangerous precedent would be set if we start to carve out employment agreements for select employees. Who will be the next employee? Also, you've expressed what I would consider to be defiance to your management, and you've kind of created some brinksmanship. And that's reality, you've created brinksmanship. And a manager, when faced with brinksmanship, tries to negotiate out a solution, council has said, we really don't want you to resign, but that's your decision. Or at that brinksmanship, it's your initiative. You've indicated the petty debates about city council room seating arrangements, the content of the meeting agenda and others led, they lead me to conclude you're trying to manage council rather than work with them. These are the city council chambers. This is their workspace. Do you go around city hall rearranging employees' workspaces to your satisfaction? Would any workplace in a public company allow one manager to design and manage their workplace? I think not. But that's what, by saying, I want tables over there, is an indication that that's your choice, and you've gone brinksmanship with council. Same for the agenda. The meeting is not titled the city manager meeting. It is the council meeting with a set policy. The meeting is not titled the city manager meeting. You're an attendee with a function to participate. If you find the arrangement of council chambers and council meeting agenda to be such critical issues that they're part of your grounds for resignation, I think you've become a micromanager undeserving of the function of city manager of a city with a population of thirteen thousand people. Unfortunately, it appears we may have chosen you, we should have chosen the other fellow who is perhaps a little more flexible. Thank you.
I usually don't do this. My name's Mike Andresic. I live at twenty-three sixty-four Nakoma Boulevard, eight-year resident of Mount Dora. And the one thing I haven't heard anybody say yet, and to me, is the fundamental problem, that this should never have gotten to this point. Mr. Pastu's departure is not going to solve what I see as the problem. He's your employee. I don't know anything about running a city. I give you that. I do know about managing people. And for you not to recognize that there was a problem with your relationship with your city manager and let it get to this point indicates to me that you're out of touch with the running of this city, because you need to build, foster, nurture that relationship. I know of no bigger duty or responsibility that you have than to make sure you have a good working relationship with your city manager. And if Mr. Pastu leaves, you've got another one you're going to have to deal with. And if you don't learn the lesson this time, we'll have the same problem again with the next city manager, because I guarantee you, anybody worth their salt is going to want to run the city and all the employees that report to him in a very strong manner. And you've got to let your city manager do that. Thank you.
I'm Lindley DeVille, eighty twenty-one Kobe Circle, Mount Dora. On Tuesday, I almost got up at the very beginning when you called for people and said, here's what I think's going to happen two hours later. Cal's going to make a motion, Marie's going to second, and it's going to be defeated four to three. We're doing the same thing tonight. You're asking for our opinion, you're not going to pay any attention. Four to three. How many? Anything that was critical, four to three. It's the way it is. We just have to forget the, what, you were elected, you were duly elected, you have the right to do this. It's a shame, but you have the right to do this. Four to three.
Good evening. My name is Bill Waddell. I live at eight thirty-one North Grandview, here in Mount Dora. In talking to the people in the lobby, I understand that a lot of people who do not live in Mount Dora, they're here to make comments and did it for this podium, which I really don't respect in itself. I traveled South Florida for thirty-five years for a gentleman that maybe some of you have heard of, Wayne Hizinga. And I was in the garbage business. So I got to know a lot of city managers and a lot of council people. And I'll tell you, there's two forms in South Florida. There's the city manager, who kind of runs the city, and there's the council that kind of runs the city. And our charter indicates that it's the council. And I don't know what the big thing is. Now, if someone comes along and they try to sway things their way because it makes it more convenient for them, then maybe they need to find a city where it doesn't have that kind of a charter. It's very simple. And I've seen city managers go. And in South Florida, there's a comment that they kick around with the city managers, never buy wall-to-wall carpeting. So that's the way it is in the city. And I told that to the city manager who left here, and he laughed, because he knew what I was talking about. City managers are a dime a dozen, I'll tell you that. Maybe one?
Please, please.
Come on. I've been in this business too long. I've seen too many city managers.
I got a dollar, buddy.
There's a city, there's a city manager.
Please, dust them out right now. Audience, please be quiet.
There's a city manager in Pembroke Pines, which is about, well, it's about two hundred and forty thousand people, okay? He's a great guy, but he runs into problems every time he tries to buck the council. And so I suggest that we find a city manager who is not using the failed threats, as was published in the letter, to try and manipulate to get what he wants. The ruling party in this city, and I respect that, is the council. And someone made a comment about, it's four to three? Four to three went on for years in this city, from what I'm talking about. And a lot didn't get done. A lot didn't get done.
We'd like to see things done.
The council will sit late. No cross talk. Ms. Waddell, your three minutes is very good. Thank you very much. Just for, I'm going to say a solo hour for some people out there. Anybody else out there in lobby? Thank you.
Vincent Calvo, downtown owner of a business for twenty-nine years. I chose Mount Dora because it looked like something it really wasn't. I've lived throughout all regimes, this is another regime. Thank God, I don't think you're going to be reelected, but that's all right. Downtown is a very special place. We are dependent on tourists. That's what runs most of our businesses. When you're talking about rents, our rents are acceptable. If they're not acceptable, you move on. When I came here in eighty-seven, four to five stores were open, everything was boarded up. We worked very hard, a whole team of us. We tried, some of us didn't succeed, others did. You're all frightened little people. I think that when you have a council meeting like this, and there's one thing on the agenda that everybody is pro or con, you all show up, you have a great force behind you. That doesn't necessarily mean you're in the right or you're doing the right thing. Agenda-wise, I don't really know what goes on in politics, I'm not really interested. I do what I have to do. Other people who work for the city do what they have to do. If it's not right or was sudden, I understand why they would want to leave rather than you pounce them out. But if you desire to have them leave, fine. It's on your back, you'll have to live with it, because in one year, in nine months, the election comes up again. If you didn't do your job right, it'll show in the voting record. Just want to say, it's unfortunate we don't get along a little better in town. We should, because our livelihood is dependent on everybody coexisting. You have a lot of hate, you have a lot of misunderstanding about what downtown is. I don't like people saying we gouge people with the rents. That's not so. And there are only three owners, and all of downtown are four, so it's four people that you're singling out, doing the wrong thing. If you listen to the store owners who have no vested interest in downtown, they shouldn't have a huge say. I never see anybody at these meetings unless it's something like this. Most of these meetings are so sparsely attended, it's amazing to me that anybody even cares. So when there's something like this going on, I don't understand what all the ruckus is, because we should be able to get along a little bit better. Set an example for the people coming to town. If we don't have people living here who can set the right example, set the tone yourself. There's been so much underlying dissent, I just can't, I never saw anything like this in the twenty-nine years I'm here, and there've been some rowdy times, but this is just out of hand. You have to look at yourselves and think a little more of the general agenda, not private agenda. And you don't say nice things, it's not right. Should be a little kinder.
Anybody else here to address the council?
Andrea Hanroth, six five eight Clark Court. I just want to say I support our new council members. Seventy percent of us voted for you. We expect you to do it.
Actor Hussein, live in this town twenty-nine years. Coming to this town was nothing, only four businesses between Fourth and Fifth Avenue and Downey Street. But all my youth, all the gray hair. Put all my youth, all the gray hairs in this town. You see, all the gray hairs happen in this town. All this town. I give my best years of my life to this town. Best year. Most of the folks come four or five years ago. I don't know what skin you have in the game in this town, because I don't think so you own the business, you have a job, or you raise your kids in this town. I live in this town. I have a business in this town. I live, love this town. This town give me a lot than anybody else on this whole audience give it to me. Give it to this town. This town give me everything, and I am thankful for this town and this country. I tell you one thing, you guys, most of you come in this town last four, five, or six years. You guys even don't know where the town head starts, where the tail ends. And you make a decision for this town, which a lot of people give this town so many years. You see, this downtown has never been like that, what you see now. I wish you guys see this town, when this town have only five businesses, and after 2:30, you don't find a sandwich or a food in this town to go and eat. I see this town at that time. At the end of the day, when we see some light in this town, you are just not destroyed this town, please. It's my request, consider your decision, look your decisions, and what you're doing for this town. I respect all of you, because you are elected by the peoples of Mount Dora. But it's not, don't think, always majority is right. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment?
Good evening. My name is Carol Bruno. I live at 669 Clark Court. I was very interested in the recent election, and I went to all of the presentations that I could, and I listened to all of the platforms that the people had for what they saw as the vision for Mount Dora. And at the end of each one, I asked the question, so what do you think your job is? And I got a variety of responses, but my response back was, city council is your job to manage the city manager. It is not the city manager's job to manage you. And when a city manager, in any setting, whether it's a city, a corporation, a small business, a major tech firm, it doesn't matter what it is, but when a manager, a head, a CEO, comes to an organization publicly and offers an ultimatum and conditions for his continued employment and offers his resignation, it should be promptly accepted.
Back to council, any other comments from council?
Yes, I would like to. Okay. I put together my Hail Mary. It's actually a letter to Mr. Pastu. And I'd like to read it. I've taken, and this is not by any ghostwriters, it's from me and my heart. I would like to begin by addressing you personally, Mr. Pastu. Speaking for myself and for much of Mount Dora citizens, I apologize. We apologize. We were so excited when you set to the position of city manager seven months ago, and we were looking our future with you. All 15 of the focus groups I conducted picked you, and one other is their top picks, including the shining on government group. We are a quaint little town, growing by leaps and bounds, and you are the perfect choice to lead us in the right direction. Our history is deep as well as rich in uniqueness, and we continually fight to keep it that way. Our attitude has always been of togetherness and harmony that looks forward to working together and meeting the significant challenges on the near horizon. We are working so hard to present our better angels that we actually begin to convince ourselves that we might really be those angels. That was from Abraham Lincoln, by the way, that we could become what we admire. Then we had an election, and our better angels stayed home. What we saw last Tuesday, that's not the real Mount Dora. An animosity and divisiveness so thick you could almost smell the sulfur. No point in trying to deny it. The pretense is shattered. This is part of Mount Dora that I don't understand. Trying to halt process and fill political agendas at the cost of letting go of all the history and the three people who have dedicated their knowledge, expertise, and harped into what is truly someplace special.